Welcome, everyone, and thank you for being here for this committee of the whole meeting Thursday, November 24th, 2022. I'd like to first acknowledge that we're meeting on the territory of the SeaShirt First Nation. And our first item is to adopt the agenda. There is one change to the agenda. We're missing a number seven, so conveniently, we can replace that with a number seven from the same GM of Infrastructure Services, Water Supply Update. So with that amendment, I'm looking for a motion to adopt the agenda. Moved by Director McMahon, seconded by Alton Toth. Director Toth, getting used to this, your counselor, Alton, director, have any other titles? All those in favor? The motion carries. I did. So our first item on the agenda in reports is the Budget Project Status Report Update from the senior leadership team. So that's we're getting echoes on and off now. Testing. That's better. Okay.
Yes, the latest version of the Budget Project Status Report is before you, and the senior leadership team is available to take any questions you may have.
So this has 61 items on it. And hopefully, we won't talk about each and every one of them, but I'm looking for questions, and I see Director Bax first.
I'd like to know, is the COVID funding in place, or is it something that we're waiting for? The COVID restart funding. Is that something we've received?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, sorry. Director McMahon.
Yes, I just wanted to ask the CIO what he thinks the completion rate for these projects is going to look like at year end.
I will have actually a few slides on that at pre-budget on completion rates.
Any other? Okay, Director Bax.
In line 11, we've got the budget for Field Road Project, the Corporate Recycling Program. How it says it's it says it's 50% complete, and it's really close to being using up all the money that's budgeted for it. Do you think this will be in budget? Will it will it complete within the budget that's been allotted for it?
Staff's having a look at that.
Yeah, that would be a that would be a question for the Chief Financial Officer, who's not in the meeting right now, so we'll have to circle back and get a response back on that one.
Director McMahon.
Right, line 108, the Bylaw 422 update. Where are we with that?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the question. We are annually does a review undertaken of the Bylaw 42 based on the results of the prior DRP, drought response plan implementation. So a report on that will be coming forward next month. But a full review, a modernization of the entire text is currently on the way, and we hope to present an updated bylaw to the community first, and then to the board in 2023.
Follow-up.
Is that the bylaw that includes agricultural use of water?
That's, thank you for the question. Bylaw 42 is the water rates and regulation question. So it includes everything related to how we charge and who we charge and who can use the water and who cannot use the water.
Director Stamford.
Thank you, Chair. I have dozens and dozens of questions, but I'm not, we're not here all day. So I'm just going to pick on things that are focused in the area that I'm entrusted in right now. And that is, I have some questions around line 20, the New Brighton Dock study. How integrated is this line item with the rest of the port's function? And do you see that becoming more integrated as we move forward? And are you working with the nation, or are you working with NICHCAI Development Corp. in those kind of conversations? And I could go on, but I won't.
This might need an agenda or a report on its own, it sounds like at some point.
At some point, yeah.
Looking just to staff.
Thank you. Thank you for the question. So the New Brighton project line item that you see before you is a completely standalone item. It is not linked to our port services because we don't, we're not responsible for the New Brighton Dock. So this was money that was approved by the board to facilitate a community conversation, knowing that the Squamish Nation was interested in someone else taking over potential ownership and/or operation of the New Brighton Dock, knowing that that caused the community great concern, and wanting to help facilitate a conversation on what it might look like to retain community use of that dock in the future or port in the future. So this money was approved to do something. It was left quite open in terms of what that something looked like. So what has been action to date on this particular item is I have been in conversation with the corporation. That is who I'm dealing with, because that is where the port falls under, not under the nation anymore. They've put it under their corporation that is responsible for their businesses. I have continued conversation with the Gambier Island Community Association and their subcommittee, the New Brighton Dock Subcommittee. We have conversed with provincial representation, and I know that community members are also very active in conversing with provincial representation. And we have initiated major inspections of the ports that we are responsible for operating. And what we have linked that with is in conversation with the corporation. They were also willing to potentially cost share with us on a major inspection of the New Brighton Dock. And so those inspections actually begin next week. So we will be inspecting the four ports slash docks, sorry, I use that term interchangeably, so forgive me. We are launching our major inspections for those four ports that we are responsible for on Gambier, in addition to the New Brighton Dock. And what will that that will give us is it will help inform the major capital investments that will be required on the New Brighton Dock over the next 15 to 20 years, and as well our other docks, so that we can take a look at the docks holistically in that conversation. Do we is, I know that the Community Association is interested in having the SCRD take over responsibility for that dock. To date, there has been no commitment by the board to do so. But one of the things that obviously would inform that conversation and potential decision making is what is the financial impact of the New Brighton Dock, and how does that relate to the other four docks that we currently operate? So in the new year, we we should by Q2 have those major inspections complete, which will help inform part of the conversation. We then have some community engagement that we need to do. So that will also be occurring with the ultimate outcome of being able to come back to the board with a report that talks about what potentially are our options that exist out there? What would the community be desirous of? What might that impact be? I will carry on conversations with the corporation as it relates to the dock to find out what they're desiring and what they're interested in potentially partnership with the SCRD might look like. And so I anticipate something Q3-ish for the board. And I hope that answers your question. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Director Gabias.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I am curious, because there's so much going on here. There's a lot of information to digest, and we're limited for time. So I'm curious as to what other opportunities we're going to have to ask questions, because there's, like, I've got a lot.
Always. There's that EA@scrd.ca, right, that we can we can utilize as directors asking.
Okay, so just email. Okay, perfect. Well, I have one right now. Line, I think it's page 16, line 58, reserve for future emergency events. And there's no, okay, am I on the right? Yeah, so under budget expended to date, there's no number there. Can you tell me a little bit more about this? Like, has it all been spent? How how fast was it spent? Under completed. It's in the completed. Yeah, sorry, shouldn't mention that. The blue part.
Thank you for the question, Chair. So that item was a 2022 budget proposal, recognizing that over the last few years, due to frequent EOC activations, costs were being incurred for our emergency program that we were not always prepared for. And so it's an ongoing contribution to the reserve fund and made through the annual budget process that puts us in a position to be ready or to respond. And so it's it's important. I don't want to I don't want to understate it, but it's it's an administrative financial piece that just ensures that we have some funds in reserve. Thanks.
Quick follow-up.
Go ahead.
So so just to be clear, so this money was put aside and then was spent in 2022?
Way it would help to have our chief financial officer with us say. The money was included in the 2022 tax requisition, so the money is there. And we report on the use of our the drawdown of our annual budget through quarterly variance reports, and then, of course, at year end. Thank you.
Thank you. And I see a few more questions, a few more hands up, but hopefully, we can close it up after that. That's absolutely, you've got a hand up. So you're good. Director McMahon.
Yes, line 112 about Mary Ann West, which says monitoring plan, development plan is scheduled to be initiated in Q4. And I'd like a little more detail on that. Thank you.
Thank you for the question. To all the other priorities we have been working on, I don't think that we will be in a position to initiate that conversation in Q4. But there's definitely work is going to be on the way there. Once we have some more staff positions also filled in that in the division that will work on it to develop that that monitoring plan in combination with Tom Kipson's. And then, an invite will be definitely also sent to the SeaShirt Nation to or to the Squamish Nation to to join us in that effort.
Director Bax.
So many questions. Let's see, I'll pick this one. There is a line, where is it? Line 43. It talks about, it's on hold. This particular update of the parking at Cooper's Green is on hold until the site of the hall is confirmed. I'd like to know why we can't go ahead with this project regardless of whether the hall is positioned in Cooper's Green or not. I think Cooper's Green, if there's a need for improved parking, that this should go ahead regardless of where the hall is located.
Thank you for the question. I remembered to turn on my camera this time, so you can actually see me when I'm responding. There certainly is an intent eventually to get there. So it's not like this will never happen. But until we finalize the situation of the hall and where it may or may not sit on Cooper's Green, we can't do planning around parking improvements. So it's intended to go forward. It's just on hall on hold until we get a more definitive plan in place for the hall. Thank you.
You want to squeeze one more in right now? I'll give you one more.
For me? Yeah, I want some clarity around.
Sorry, I want some clarity around some of the lines. There's line, line 12, line 13, line 17, and 18. They all sound about the same. So how are they different?
Thank you. And that is a great question, because it does get confusing. So it's a regional district accounting anomaly, in that we have different services, and each pot of money has to remain separate. And so when we have an initiative that more than one service are going to contribute to financially, we have to recognize that expenditure individually within those service functions. So within fleet and within transit, they both had an initiative in 2021 to do some security upgrades to the building and some parking lot upgrades. We so we had two lines related to that. Then in 2022, we came forward because we needed to increase the budget to actually finish the initiatives, because they came in higher than we originally anticipated. So we had two more lines related to that. So those four lines are exactly the same project. You will find that throughout the BPSR, that you may, especially in community rec and also in infrastructure, where you'll find there are multiple projects and multiple lines, but they're the same project. It's just multiple services contributing to that cost. Thank you.
Thank you.
Follow-up. I'm just wondering if if the money read, the money that's shown in in each budget line is that separate money, or is that the same money? Because it's identical amount, 6,000 and 3,250?
It is separate money, so you add them all together for the cost of the project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I'll jump to Director Henderson right now, because he has not had a question yet.
Thank you, Chair. I guess the it goes back to page three of the package. But when will we, given we've only got about a month left in December or in 2022, when will we get the Human Resources Plan? I guess that's to Mr. McKinley in the absence of.
I'll get back to you.
Director Stamford.
Thank you, Chair. On line 22, it's notified that the SCRD is not successful in receiving the ICIP grant for ports capital. And I've noticed that it's been applied for several times. Is there a specific reason why the we're not getting that grant? And is it worth reapplying again? Or is there a different pot of money to look at?
Thank you for the question. I would suggest that we apply for many, many, many grants that we do not get, because most grants are significantly oversubscribed. So we keep, as as grants come available, we take a look at what projects we might have that we that may be eligible for that particular grant. And we do submit applications at that time. In relation to this particular line item, this is an old line item now, fairly outdated in terms of the dollar values. So we are in the process of trying to finish our RFP to get an engineer to relook at these projects. They're still priorities, identify what the design would look like, and update cost estimates. And then we want to prioritize what we can potentially get done, so that we can either move ahead with some projects, or, you know, seek additional funding, or continue to look after grants. So a subsequent report will be coming forward in 2023. Thank you.
Can I have a follow-up? Super quick.
I see someone who wants someone wants to ask a question who hasn't yet, but super quick, yes.
It's just a structural thing that those of us that are going to be sending lots of questions through the EA email, if we could copy the other new directors, so that we can all keep the the information and get it.
I believe the procedure is we we all get the answer. Isn't that, yeah. So so we all get the answer, and we'll see the question on the thread, too.
Super.
Yeah. Director Toth.
Thank you, Chair. Just a real quick one. Line 31, the Arena Refrigeration Plant Regulatory Items. Given that it's, you know, there's no change for a while here since March, by the looks of it. Are we risking noncompliance or any sort of compliance issues with not getting the these changes finished? Thank you.
It's a great question. Thank you very much. I missed the line item, but I think I know the answer anyways without knowing the line item. So you will actually see in an upcoming report that we are, I think this is the line, that we are suggesting that we cancel this project, because we're not getting response back. And so what that means is that it's not a priority anymore for our regulatory body. So until it circles back on us, we're, it's been on hold forever. So we've actually suggested that we cancel the project. When we circle back, we may be back in front with a new budget request, but it probably makes sense to update that at the time. Thank you. So no risk. Thank you.
And I see one last question for Director Henderson. No, okay, it's done. Okay. We need a motion to receive. Is there another? Yeah.
Thank you, Chair. Just so that everybody knows, on this Budget Project Status Report, the next iteration of this will come forward in pre-budget. So you'll also see these projects coming forward in the complete list of projects coming forward. So you'll have lots more times to ask questions on them and think about what questions you'd like to ask at that time, too.
And as as this board moves forward, we'll be seeing these projects over and over again in various reports. And yeah. So I'm looking for a motion to receive. Moved by Director Toth, seconded by Director Henderson. Any discussion? I see the CIO.
I was just going to say, and it's not related to receiving this, the questions that you have that haven't been answered during this session here today, I'm not sure if it's going to be EA at, but I will, I'm going to have some discussions about it, and I will let you know the the best way to send the questions forward.
Okay, I'm sorry. I saw that come out as an email, so that's what I.
Yeah, we're we're still, we're still working on it. So I'll just confirm that, and then I'll let everyone know.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor, the motion to receive, the motion carries. Item three on our agenda is a Budget 2023 Communications Plan. I don't see Manager Buckley here, or is he? On screen, okay, there he is. Yeah. Go ahead. I mean, with a brief summary, and I'll look to directors for questions, please. Sorry, is there any way to turn your mic volume up? It might be the room. I mean, yeah, mic volumes are usually maxed, but. Yeah, you're the first person we've tried up there. Everyone in the room, just be very quiet. Everyone in the room, just be very quiet. Thank you. Director McMahon.
Yes. For our new directors, we have an engagement spectrum that ranges from inform to consult or something like that. So I take it in this, we are on the inform end of the spectrum, looking at the, the wording and stuff. And I just wanted to give a small piece of feedback. The, the Zoom information session that I was involved in last year was at six o'clock on a Friday night. And I'd really like a different time. Could we arrange that? Thank you.
Okay. Feedback has been received. Director Bax.
Talking to action point number three, when we do these budget information sessions, is, is there going to be staff available to answer questions to the public as well? Thank you for your answer.
Thank you. I'm looking for a motion to receive this report. Moved by Director Bax, seconded Director McMahon. All those in favor, the motion carries. And on to item four, which is a departmental report for Q3 for community services. And we have the GM of Community Services with us here. It's a very thorough report. So unless there's any updates or anything, I'll look to directors for questions. Okay. Any, any questions, directors? We're good? Oh, oh, there's someone. Okay. Yeah. Sorry. I'm not used to the AV yet. We don't have it in Gibson's yet. Maybe, maybe it's supply chain delays. Director Bax.
Sorry. Thanks. I've got a, I was just wondering, how much snow is there at Dakota Ridge right now?
Thank you for the question. I am unable to answer the question because I don't know how much snow is up there. I can tell you that there are volunteers up there working along with staff working. So there is snow. I don't know the actual numbers of centimeters. It has not officially been opened yet either. Thank you. We do put something on the web and we do announce when we open it, when it's ready to go. Thank you.
Thanks for your answer.
Director McMahon.
Yes. I have several, but the first one, sports fields. I've had several people ask me, how many of the sports fields on the coast are still on Chapman drinking water for irrigation? Did we change over some of those fields so that they have their own water supply now?
Thank you for the question. I can tell you that as part of water restriction regulations, I believe level four, we turn off irrigation systems. So they're not on. I actually am unable to answer the question as to what systems they are on. I can tell you that Lyons up in Pender is probably on the Pender system, but the other ones I'm unsure of. So I'll get back to you with that answer. Thank you.
Have another one.
Thank you. On page 25, we passed a draft cemetery master plan. I remember that meeting really well, but the plan on our website appears as the master plan with no draft on it. So that needs to be corrected because, you know, I and the previous board were not necessarily in tune with the recommendations in that plan. And there was no public consultation whatsoever. So I know that that is in the works in the future. She said hopefully.
Thank you for drawing that to my attention. I was unaware that, of that. And you're absolutely right. I do try to refer to it as the draft because I am very aware that it was not adopted by the board as a planning tool. The board did ask us through budget deliberations in 2023 to come back with what it would, what would needed, what would be needed to undertake community engagement. And so that is part of the 2023 budget package you will get. Thank you.
So from water issues to watermark issues. One more. Go ahead.
Park usership. How do we measure park usership? I mean, I go down to Chastor Beach regularly and that park is busy all the time, every day, morning, noon, and night. But in general, is there any way for us to tell?
Thank you for the question.
Is, sorry, is everybody on mute who's online? I'm not sure. This is a really, this is a big ask. Has, has Remco been manually muted there? Okay. I can, he's on, he's muted on mine. So I think that, I think he found out.
Yes. Thank you for the question. There is no way, unless you want to park someone at a, at a park, park someone at a park, to do head counts of measuring. So we do measure it in, in different ways, not quantitatively by, but, but just we can tell by garbage, the amount of garbage that shows up in our parks, by the wear and tear on trails that occur in our parks. So we are able intuitively to see that as, as we are out in our parks doing our inspections and our maintenance. But there are things that you could purchase. You could purchase a trail counter that you can put at the head of trails or park entrances to see people going back and forth and, and do some counts that way. That, that is a cost. We don't have a budget to do that. But otherwise you could hire a summer student and have them do head counts, but it's more around what's left over when, when people have left the park that help us sort of see how well it's used. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm looking for a motion to receive the report now. Moved by Director Toth, seconded by Director McMahon. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? The motion carries. And staff has requested a five minute break, I think, to address technical issues. Is, oh, looking here? Still, it's, we're good? Five minute break. Yeah. Okay. Recess for five minutes. We are back from recess and I don't think the technical issue's been resolved. We're going to, we're going to try a test here, but it seems to be related to a Zoom update that, that happens to all of us. And it's, it's caused problems for our AV system here at the SCRD. So I apologize to those watching because I understand on YouTube, you can hear us in the room, but you can't hear anybody who's, who's reporting from, from Zoom only. So we're going to, we're going to try a, a test here with, with Kevin Clarkson. I think Kevin's ready. Okay. Well, I can confirm, we can barely hear you again here, but we can hear you if we're very quiet. But how, how do we know about the YouTube? That's, that's being looked at too, right? Yeah, that's what I, that's what we know. But that, that, so.
So that, I'm not getting anything that, anything came up on YouTube. So it, it looks like unfortunately folks that are viewing on YouTube will not be able to hear the people that are speaking that aren't in the room.
Okay. We can in the room though. So especially.
Apparently Kevin was barely audible on YouTube.
Barely audible, Kevin. But we, we can barely hear, we, we can, we can hear people in the room. So I, I'm looking especially to Director Paul. You can fully participate in this meeting because we can all hear you. Unfortunately, the audience in YouTube cannot.
The, the option for people that are currently viewing on YouTube that aren't able to hear anything, if they would like, they can go to our webpage and join via Zoom from our webpage where they will probably be able to hear us.
Otherwise, come up to Field Road. There's lots of, lots of empty seats here. Now we're on to our next report, which there is, I just, there's, there's a change made that I'll, I'll start right off the top here. The second last and that should say the 2024 budget. And well, this is, this is a complex issue. It certainly raised my eyebrows when I was reading it. And I'm sure directors who are coming back are well aware of it. It seems like it's been, been a challenge for, for the SCRD for recent months. I'll, it is complex. So I will look to the GM to give us a summary for the new directors especially.
Thank you very much. I did have Manager Van Valzen ready to give an introduction, but I, I, and I feel it's important that you hear an introduction. So, but unfortunately you won't be able to hear him. So he did email me something this morning. So I'm on my phone and I am going to read his introduction. Thank you, Manager Van Valzen for providing it. And then we, he is available to answer questions as am I after, after the introduction. So in 2021, it was discovered that the fire sprinkler system at the Seashell Aquatic Center had failed prematurely due to a microbiological corrosion or MIC, and it required replacement. In 2021, we did the design work for the replacement. A project went out to tender. There was a budget approved at the time for about 180,000 and it was established for the project based on engineering advice that we had at the time. An award report was brought forward after the tender closed to the board in June of 2021. And the project tender bid was over 700 and $700,000 at the time. So exceeded the budget that we had available. And so at the time, the board made the decision not to proceed with the installation of the permanent fire sprinkler, but rather to install a temporary system, which is called a linear heat detection system, that permitted us to keep the facility open for the public and asked us to look at a, a different way of perhaps re-tendering in a phased approach to split the costs over a few years. So we had to go back to our engineer and actually get a new engineer. So that procurement process took time. But since that point in time, we have had an engineer in place that has looked at a phased approach. So over two years installing the permanent fire system. And because the problem of the, the MIC, the microbiological condition, was not resolved in terms of what caused it. in terms of what caused it, and we to this date do not know, the engineer did provide an alternate option than just a like-for-like replacement. So a like-for-like replacement, or the wet system, does have the risk of a similar incident occurring again. How great the risk, we, we do not know, but because we were unable to identify what caused it in the first place, it exists. So they did provide the option of a nitro, nitrogen system, which would address the risk of the MIC occurring again. So those two options are in front of the board today. Staff has recommended the nitrogen system simply because it does reduce the risk of this MIC occurring again. Nitrogen gas is an inert gas with very low reactivity to other substances. It occurs naturally in the air we breathe, and so at the concentrations that exist within the system, it does not pose a risk if there was a leak in the system, just to kind of calm people's minds about the potential of having nitrogen in the facility. So it is a highly recommended option from our engineer, and it, it is also the staff recommended option. And I and Manager Van Valzen are happy to answer questions that you might have. Thank you.
Technical issues continue. Director Backs has a question.
So I did some math on this one, and I realized that this is a five-year loan that we would take out on this piece. And it would add something, over the five years, it would add, for the more expensive one, about $18 to my tax bill, and about $10 for the, for the cheaper version. But the, the real question I'd like to bring up that might be a little bit uncomfortable is what is the expected lifespan of the, the Seashell Aquatic Center?
Thank you for the question. And Manager Van Valzen, feel free to chime in when I'm done if you feel that it requires additional answer. But the Seashell Aquatic Center is a new facility, so facilities like that are 50-plus years. And if you have a robust preventative maintenance program and capital investment program, you can prolong the life of those buildings longer. So I would suggest, well, it is our newest recreation facility, so it is in fact, despite some problems in the past and some, some ongoing issues that we have, which our, our staff and contractors have worked very hard over the past seven years to resolve many of those issues. And so I would suggest to you that the building is functioning and operating as, as best as it can, and they've done a great job of doing that. So it is one of our best buildings in terms of its condition and its life expectancy. Thank you.
There are a number of questions lined up. Director McMahon is next.
Yes, that phrase failed prematurely has come up a whole lot in regards to the Seashell Pool. I can think of three major failures so far, which does make me worried about pouring more money into this particular hole in the ground. One question I did have is, there wasn't any relative discussion of the climate impacts of the two different solutions. Is there a difference in terms of GHG emissions? And there was a mention that the nitrogen system would be more expensive to maintain, and I wanted to get a little more detail on that. Thank you.
Thank you, and I will turn that over to Manager Van Valzen, please. Thank you.
That came through loud and clear, but I think it might have been turned down a little too much at the end there. Okay, go ahead, GM.
Thank you. I just wanted to make it very clear that we do not have a choice. If we want to keep this building open to the public, we must install a permanent fire sprinkler system. Our linear heat detection system was meant as a temporary fix, and we've already, we're already on borrowed time with that. Thank you.
Director Stanford?
Thank you, Chair. I'm just wondering, is there other pools that have a similar nitrogen system? Are we in conversation with them? Is it a more of a standard across other community pools?
Manager Van Valzen?
Thank you. Director McMahon?
Yes, and how would the dry system impact our water usage? Or to put it the other way, how, how, how does the sprinkler system impact our water usage at SAC? Is it significant?
Seeing no more questions, I'm wondering if directors are ready to entertain the recommendation? And if there's anyone interested in moving the recommendation, which of course is the, includes the change of 2024 budget? Could, is it related to the, it's, this is a thorough.
No, no, it's on the, the terminal log.
Okay, I have a mover. Is there a seconder, seconded by Director Toth? Sorry, Director McMahon, I couldn't really hit, the motion was already in motion. But in discussion, you can ask a question? We're in discussion now?
Yes. The staff is recommending a five-year loan. That's a pretty significant amount for a five-year loan. Is, is it required that we do no more than five years on this loan, or had we looked at a, a longer amortization period? Thank you.
Thank you for the question, and it's, I'm not sure I'm able to answer it other than this was the recommendation that came from the CFO in terms of how we would fund it, the, the project. Thank you.
I see the CFO on our screen.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Essentially, the recommendation was for a five-year loan. The project became significantly larger in scope and budget, and so until we found out the actual values, we did not pivot to then transition to an alternative approval process. So it is maintained with the original financing method, which is a five-year loan under agreement with the municipal finance authority. If we wanted to convert to that, we wouldn't be able to proceed, and it would actually delay the project probably by a considerable amount of time, maybe up to a year. We do have the capital plans for recreation proposed as part of the pre-budget, so you'll be seeing some updates, which this particular project is considered as part of that funding envelope. So yes, it would considerably impact the ability to move forward with the project.
Thank you. So we're, we're still considering the motion, that's the recommendation on page 50, and I see Director Henderson with his hand raised.
Thank you, Chair. Just the, I think the point to, to confirm what the CFO says, we cannot go beyond five years without going outside to a referendum or another approval process, so it's not an option.
Any more discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? All those opposed to the motion? Now, do we, do we follow the, the question of asking if that?
Yes.
Yeah, do you want that recorded?
Sure.
Yeah, okay. Director Backs opposed, and the motion carries. On to item six, which is a November 2022 storm damage emergency response. And our GM of Planning and Development is here to answer any questions on this. Do we, do we want a short update on this topic, or get right into questions? Look for questions. I'll look for a short update then, at least to have some kind of, there's no, there's no questions to guide, to guide us here, so.
Is there a topic?
Oh, sorry. Director McMahon?
Hopkins. I, I am very confused about the, the costs associated with helping out the, the Hopkins Water System. I mean, obviously, we need to help them out there in an emergency situation, but this is begging a whole lot of questions about cost recovery and what's gonna happen if the Improvement District dissolves and we have to take it on at the Regional District. So I'm guessing perhaps there may be a staff report on this subject coming up somewhere soon?
Thanks for the question. I'll start, and GM Rosenbaum may have additional comments. Staff understand that there's interest on the part of the Improvement District in seeing the Regional District take over operations. That would, that's not an automatic thing. That is a decision for the board to make. And at this point, the work that's described in this report is entirely focused on, well, I'll qualify that. It's 90% focused on the short term of assuring mutual aid and sustainable service in an effort to protect health and life safety. Staff do consider that there is an opportunity with the work that is required to do that to plan a little bit for the long term. And this is separate from the issue of whether the Improvement District dissolves or not. But as described in the official community plan for West House Hound, there is an interest in mutual aid between water systems for, for a variety of benefits, including benefits to the Regional District. And so things that are done now in the short term to address this issue, do you have the benefit of a long-term gain in terms of quality of, of connections? But that's, I just want to be clear, that is separate from a conversation that could occur in the future about the future of that Improvement District.
Okay, I don't want this whole conversation to be about that longer term. But how, how, I guess I'll ask, how would that be initiated, though? I mean, if, if that's, is that something the board would need to? Or would it come more from the, the Improvement District itself?
Thank you for the question. The Improvement District approached staff this, early this year, exploring what the process would look like for them to, for us, for the SCRD to take over the water service, which would actually require a lengthy process with all kinds of legal steps involved. That may take several years to complete. So in the meantime, staff are working on a mutual aid agreement between us and the Hopkins Improvement District to make sure that the current mutual aid and in the future mutual aid is agreed, is at least covered by an agreement.
Thank you. So I take it the answer is yes, but not, not, not a report soon on the agenda. I see Director Stanford next.
Yes, it's, it's more of a comment than anything. Speaking to the, the Water Improvement District representatives, they describe the mutual aid and that they have supported other community systems in the past with their water. They are working as hard as they can to get this back up and working on its own auspices. So I just think it's, it's looking down the line, that's one question, but maintaining a water system for about 170 individuals is critical service.
Thank you. Director Henderson?
Thank you, Chair. I'm wondering, this is about $300,000 that we're, we're contemplating in the different categories, and we're hoping, is that fair? Look over to the, to Mr. Hall. What's, what is the process and the timeframe to determine if EMBC, et cetera, will fund some or all of these costs?
Good to staff.
Thank you for the question. In general, the process is starting with the possibility of insurance coverage, and then confirm, confirmation or denial of insurance coverage informs whether EMBC may be able to support eligible cost recovery. And at, at this point, by way of an update, we're, we're in the throes of that, working with both EMBC and our insurer. And in terms of timeframe for finding out more, I don't know. I know there was a lot of damage reported across the region at this time, so I, I think the, the response from our insurer will be, is the piece I'm least clear about. EMBC has been extremely responsive and supportive. I'll optimistically suggest that later this year, we'll be in a position to at least provide an update on progress. Thanks.
Thank you.
Could I, just as a follow-up? So that's next month, but are we, I guess my better way of phrasing it, this is exposing us to $300,000 of costs, or what do, what do you anticipate? Is this something where we're going to end up having to absorb half of it, or are you hopeful that we might get most of it recovered? Not, not looking for your commitment.
Might be, might be a bit of a negotiation now, so, yeah.
Yeah, I, thanks, Chair. I hesitate.
I think it's fair to just say it's a negotiation if you want to say that. Yeah, okay. Director Backs?
Yeah, one of my questions was a variation if what Director Henderson had to say is that we're expected, right, it's an emergency situation, and we're expected to pay the, the money upfront, and then hope to get it back from the insurers and the EMBC, right? But I did want to
Yeah.
draw attention to a line on page 57, cost recovery for other mandatory recovery actions, tree work, pump house, wastewater, et cetera. It says, "Staff are seeking authority to proceed with the remaining work." Is that you're, you're, you're seeking authority from the board? And is that something that we're voting on today?
Thank, thank you for the process question. For clarity, yes, staff are seeking a decision from, from the board this afternoon, which is, which is an expediated process, given the nature of the issue at hand. And the decision to be made is about the funding to support the work. Thanks.
Director Stanford, I think your hand's still up from prior? Yeah, right, okay. So Director McMahon is next.
Thank you. I'm just interested in a little more information about the damage to the Reed Road Pump House, particularly given that that's the pump house, I believe, that's handling the water coming from Church Road.
Thank you for the question. Yes, correct. There's a lot of, that's a critical piece of infrastructure on the southern, in the southern part of the Chapman system. The damage was, a tree fell through the roof. Staff were able to repair the roof temporarily, and a permanent solution needs to be put in place there to fix it long-term. But there is no damage to the actual infrastructure inside the building, luckily enough.
So indeed, this is a challenging situation, as directors have raised with the finances. I see one more question from Director McMahon?
Actually, I was going to move the recommendations on page 55.
Thank you. I see a seconder in Director Toth. Any more discussion on this motion? All those in favor? That motion carries. And we're on to the next item on the agenda, which is the, actually, it's, this is the item that was added. So item seven, which is the water supply update from GM. Isn't it? Yeah, yeah. So GM Rosenbaum is doing a verbal update.
Thank you very much, Chair, for adding this item to the agenda. Given, I think is relevant, given that we're still in Given, I think is relevant, given that we're still in, in not an ideal water supply situation. So, I will share my screen and start some slides I've prepared for this purpose. So, the last water supply update presentation I provided to the board was at the late October board meeting. Since a lot happened, so I will, this is a quick overview, brief overview of what happened since then. So, the current conditions is that we have currently, our water supply has stabilized. So, we have cooler temperatures, rain, and so, it's not getting worse as we speak, which is good, but we're totally not there yet, but more to come on that. Chapman Lake is currently, or when we were last up there several days ago, it was still about a meter on the, below the top of the dam, and Netrus Lake is even lower because it has a smaller watershed behind it, so it recharges less quickly. Our, the November 56 storm, which is talked about in the previous report, also impacted the accuracy of a reading of a flow monitoring device at Chapman Creek. We, last week, we recalibrated the, the flow monitoring gauge, and it's working adequately right now. And it was actually, since November, since early November storm, it was under-recording the amount of flow that was in the creek. So, we were, we're currently able to confirm that we currently have sufficient flow in the creek to meet the community demand, which is great news. That also resulted in us being able to recommend to the signatories, the lifting of the state of emergency that was rescinded last week. Stage four water conservation regulations will, are still in place, and more on that later in this presentation. So, this is the, the amount of rain we had to date. And as you can see, for November, or since, let's say, July, we didn't have the amount, by far not the amount of rain we usually had. This is, 2023 is, 2022 is the dark blue, and the average our last 10 years is the lighter blue. So, you can see even for November, we're definitely not, we're even less than half of what we usually have. And yes, there is a little bit of rain in forecast for the upcoming days, but then also snow early next week. So, I don't expect that we'll meet the average amount this month as well. There is more rain in forecast, more, let's put it, there's more precipitation in the forecast for the upcoming two weeks, but given the temperatures that are expected to drop in upcoming days, we expect a lot of the precipitation to fall as snow or wet snow along the coast at lower, at lower elevations. So, definitely a snow high up in the watershed. So, the last several weeks, we had some periods with warmer weather, especially at the lakes, which resulted in some snow melt. As you can see in this picture from last week, there's no snow on the trees anymore. They all melted off, but there were still several feet, feet of snow on the ground and the lakes are still frozen. But as I indicated before, I expect that, that's currently already freezing up again and expected to continue that way for the upcoming weeks. The demand from the community continues to stay low. Our target for is currently 18 and a half cubic, million cubic liters a day, and as you can see, we've been below that since, which is, for since several weeks now. So, that's, that's really good news. It's really great that the community continues to use that, that much water, because if this is way, this is still less than what is average for this time of year. So, the rainfall, that's currently still providing our immediate water supply, the rainfall and the watershed, and freezing conditions in upper watershed is still putting the long-term water supply at risk. The watershed is still dry, it's part of, in part, is now frozen over, so as a result, water is, if we have rainfall, snowfall, it's running off it, off the surface and not penetrating into the, the ground. So, because the lakes are frozen over, it's primarily rain that's falling below the dams, below the lakes, that's providing water to the creek for us to take divert from the creek for, to provide to the community. So, the upcoming freezing conditions in the lower watershed could still pose a risk to our water supply. I saw this morning, I saw temperatures like minus six throughout the day next week in forecast for next week Thursday. Those are concerning numbers for me, because from a water supply perspective, because it could result in a way larger part of our watershed to be frozen over. So, it will be really interesting to see what the creek flows will do at that time. So, we really need to see a sustained increase in water in the creek and in the lakes before we can actually lift our water conservation regulations. And of note, Chester Well, which is the well in Altonstone, we usually turn it off in the fall, late summer, fall, but it's still working at full capacity. Other sources that we have developed and that are ready to be deployed if we need them are our interim setup at Church Road, that allows us to take additional water from Somswell. The emergency supply from Towne Gibson City is still available to us, and we have plans in place to activate Great, Great Creek and Throat Lake if needed, to provide water to segments of our community. The later two will provide, will require boil water advisory if we come to deploy them. We still have several staff reassigned to EOC activities, including, we were communicating a lot with the soil impacted businesses, that's no longer the case, but our focus is still on connecting with larger water users and property with large leaks and trying to get those resolved. And currently about over 650 SAD households are, have registered to receive an email each month with our water use update, with our personal water use update, and it's still something that I really encourage residents to subscribe to. It's, send an email to, or more information on how to sign up is available at our website, sad.ch/wateruse, and you will provide, you will get an email every month with your personal water use for your property, and how it compared to previous years. I have to say, it is only available to residents with a meter installed, so that's mostly in the rural areas. Leaks, it's towards the end of the month, so we're doing our meter reads, and based on that, we will send leak letters, notifications early December. The average residential property use dropped in October with properties with leaks, and that's primarily because we addressed some of the higher, larger leaks, so the average dropped as a result, which is good, but it's still 3.8 times the average. So, property with a leak is using 3.8 times more water than a property without a leak on average. So, still leaks are our best and primary water conservation measure we can take. Firefighters were assisting us in October and November with door knocking on high water uses and leaks, properties with leaks. And last week, we issued some additional shut-off notices for properties with large leaks where no progress was made to date. What's next? We'll continue to assess our flows in Chapman Creek. How do they behave to, how do they respond to rainfall events? How do they behave during freezing conditions primarily next week? On a day-to-day basis, there is, staff are, of course, managing the water supply, working on leaks, and doing compliance enforcement if required. Reassessments of stage four is an ongoing thing, and definitely the, the cold snap that we are expecting for the next week and maybe the week after will be an interesting time for us to determine how reliable the water supply situation currently is. And until that is confirmed, the EOC Emergency Operations Center will stay active. And, but maybe in a little bit reduced capacity, but we, I can, I will, I foresee that the EOC will be activated for a longer period of time. And more than that, to answer any questions you might have.
So, I want to thank GM Rosenboom for that report, because it's obviously the, the issue of top concern to the community right now, and it's, it's great that he was able to add it to our agenda and also supply us with such a thorough report. I should also mention that, that we have been discussed, the board has been discussing these issues in the, the EOC Policy Group, so there are, there have been many questions and engagement already with staff on this issue, and a lot of communications to the public as well, there's extensive effort into that, but I'll look for any more questions. Director Bax. No, sorry. Director Bax first.
First of all, I'd like to commend GM Rosenboom and his staff for the excellent and very important work that they do for us. Can you let me, can you tell me what the flow is from the Chapman Well, liters per second?
Through the chair.
Sorry, sorry, not, the Chester Well.
I'm going to start telling, through the chair, ask your questions through the chair.
I'd like to know what the, what the flow is on the Chester Well.
Thank you.
liters per second.
Thank you Chair. It's about, this is top of my head question, 8 to 10 liters a second. So, it usually provides about 10% of our, our water supply.
Thank you. Director Henderson.
Thank you Chair. Through you to Mr. Rosenboom. Why, what do you attribute the lower consumption? Thank heavens it's happened, but, but it's more than leak detection. Does staff have any sense of what, what is, what we can attribute the extraordinary lower consumption to? I have other questions, we'll, for now.
Okay, is that, you can answer.
Thank you Chair. I think it is a combination of increased community awareness about the need to shut off taps, be mindful of their indoor water use. I think it is a combination of, I think in other factories, there were some large leaks, commercial and residential that have been resolved, and some of them were using the equivalent of, or were, some of those leaks were the equivalent of several hundreds of households of water. So, I think it's a combination of an increased awareness, still some, some reduction of use related, as a result of the stage four regulations, of course, being in place, that's a factor as well. So, I think it's really a combination of increased awareness, addressing of leaks, and the stage four regulations still being in place. So, yeah. Thank you.
And to Director Toth now, and I recognize you have more questions. Director Henderson.
Thank you Chair. It's just sort of a general question, hopefully, for staff. If you can't answer today, that's totally fine. I'm just wondering if there is any opportunity to maybe reopen the hot tub at the Seashell Aquatic Center? I know that hot tubs are prohibited under the stage four restrictions, but we're getting a lot of concern from the community, from residents regarding, you know, mental health, physical therapy, things like that, especially on a, you know, community use hot tub. As the weather gets colder, the joints get more and more stiff, so I'm just wondering if that's at all a possibility or contemplated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question, and I will look into what the options are, and it could actually maybe even require a bylaw amendment, so I will look into that.
Wow. There's your answer. Director Henderson? Oh, sorry, Director McMahon hasn't had a question yet, so Director McMahon.
Yes, our stage four regulations were really designed for summer, and we now have the unique winter stage four. Are, are we contemplating a different stage that, that, yeah, a, a seasonality to our stage system when we do the bylaw?
GM mentioned we are under the average for this time of year, but I think that's part of it. I'll, I'll look to him to address this.
Thank you for the question Chair. It's definitely something that we are going to consider as part of our bylaw update. Not sure if it will be for the, the full update or our regular evaluation update, but we're definitely, I think the bylaw can be, can be updated to allow for water conservations to be in place at different stages of the year, because it's currently only for the, for the, indeed indicated for the summer, but also, the bylaw is also intended to support emergency operations during other times of the year. What if there would be through another type of emergency event, there would be a water supply emergency during the winter months, then the stage four would not help us. So, what are, what are the provisions that we need to put in place so that we can adequately respond to those kind of situations without the need to declare a state of local emergency to retain those powers?
Thank you. Back to Director Henderson.
Thank you Chair. I think we hear the term boil water advisory a lot, and I think it would be helpful if, if Remco, if you could let all of us know in practical terms, what does that mean for a household?
Look to the GM.
Thank you Chair. A boil water advisory, if issued for Great Creek, if we are deciding that we would activate that source, it might require boil water advisory, and it would be limited, in that case, to the Tuanik and Sandy Hook area. It means that water is not suitable for, is not recommended for drinking, but it can be used for any other purpose as long as it is not, so you can, it can be used for showering, it can be used for cooking, as long as you boil it before you drink it. So, if you boil your rice in, or your potatoes in water, perfectly fine, because you will boil it for more than enough time to reduce the risk of any infection. And for the Sandy, for the Throat Lake, if we were to activate Throat Lake, such an advisory would be in place for the area north of Francis Road in Alton Bay, and there would be adequate communication with residents that might be impacted ahead of time. It would be through our social media, our website, but also, we will place signage along the roads, so that people driving in and out of those areas know that it is coming. And we will do that not when it's happening, but prior to it's actually happening.
I think that's the key point is.
Thank you.
It's not scary, sorry Chair, it's not scary to, to the public, or I think the term can be, oh my goodness, the world's coming to an end.
Yeah, and, and to be sure that it's not scary to the public, we're not actually looking at this like in the next couple of days here, this is just a possibility. Okay, now, we actually, I think, I think the board has had a, recently, there's been a convention to have a, have a motion just to, at the beginning of the meeting, to receive all the reports, so I'll look for a motion to receive this verbal report, as well as the other reports that are still upcoming on the agenda, moved by Director Toth, seconded by Director McMahon. All those in favor? The motion carries. Thank you GM Rosenboom. So, one more? Oh yeah, the, the next item is, is yours as well, GM Rosenboom, it's the Seashell Landfill Operations Contract. This looks pretty straightforward to me as a newbie in having to extend this, so I think everything's covered in the report, I hope, but I'll look for, maybe not. I'm, Director McMahon. Director McMahon looks like she has some questions. Go ahead, you can start us off.
That's one heck of a cost increase. I mean, that's a whopper. So why is it this expensive? Could we buy our own bulldozer for this much money? Like, I'm I'm struggling with this one.
Thank you. Sometimes I say when I introduce a report, I'm pleased to provide it here with a report. This is another one of those. So I feel what you're saying, Director McMahon. As indicated in the report, the the contract we had over the current operator was signed in 2012. And since a lot has changed at the landfill in terms of operations, but also just in terms of cost of living and cost of wages and cost of fuel, and there's a lot of fuel being burned during this type of work. So we anticipated a cost increase, but when we received, when we went out for the for our with our tendering process and we received the bid in response to our request proposals, we were shocked with the amount that came back and were like, no, we cannot award this contract. I cannot bring that forward to the board for approval, even though it is the only bid we received. We need to find time to come up with, assess alternative options. What can we do ourselves? What can what do we need the contractor for? Other other options in terms of scope of work, can we reduce the scope of work to can we, we need to reassess and instead of just continuing on the path we were going. So subsequently, I reached out to the current contractor to see if he was willing to do a one-year contract with us, with a one-year extension to allow for the time to for us to do the assessments, I think that you're asking for, is what are the alternative options? So instead of bringing forward a five or six-year contract, it's now a one-year contract with a year potential for year extension. That year extension would be a board decision at the next year, if that's required. I would bring forward a board report to approve that, so that's not an automatic one. So the current proposal is to enter into a new contract with our current landfill operator for a one-year contract. During this year, we will reassess our options, bring forward further information for consideration by the board in terms of what their options are and what the financial implications of those are. And then we can, I think the decision can be made on next steps, and if that next step includes a one-year extension to the contract or that we can get some get a new long-term arrangement in place by next year, December. First, one thing that is relevant in this discussion as well is what is the lifespan of our landfill? And you might remember that when we were at site during your board orientation, I showed you the area that we're looking at in terms of expanding the life, the landfill life. So we also hope to have that work concluded early 2023 to identify though, to confirm if that's indeed the option. And that would definitely also have an impact on the length of time that a new contract would be established for. So actually, this year extension, it's good to assess our options in terms of the actual operations of the landfill, as well as what is actually the landfill life that we're looking for a new contractor to do the operations for. Hope this helps.
Director Backs.
Chairman, can you tell me what the original cost per year was on this contract in 2012?
I'm just trying to instill good habits in the board. I'll look to the the GM to answer that question.
Thank you, I've got the calculator here.
Thank you for the question. The original budget for this year, as indicated in the report, was $377, almost $378,000. What it was in 2012, it was a little lower, but the the annual inflation price correction was really low in this contract. So it was not significantly lower. So it hadn't, the contract value had not changed a lot in over the last 10 years.
What, so?
Go ahead.
I didn't hear a number for 2012.
I don't have it with me.
Okay, sorry.
Director McMahon.
Yeah, I just had two other questions. Is it usual for the bulldozing to be contracted out in landfills? And assuming that we are able to site a new landfill, would it operate the same way? Or do we operate this way because we've got an old landfill and that's how you do it?
GM?
Thank you for the question. There is no, there are different models in place within the province, and some local governments have contracted out the entire operations of a landfill or transfer station, so including the drop-off area. In our case, 10 years ago, it was decided that it would be a mix between the drop the drop-off area would be managed by SOD staff and the actual operations of the on the on the active phase of the landfill itself would be contracted out. So there are different models in place. Each local government have a different approach. Vancouver has, everything is done in-house. So there are different models in place. There's no golden rule here of what's the best option. So that's and that's part of the assessment that we're going to undertake in the upcoming year.
Thank you. Director Backs. Director McMahon. Finished the questions, so we're looking at the the recommendation on page 59. As I said, I don't, to start this off, it's, yeah, it's a hard decision, it's a difficult situation for sure, but I think the GM's got sound rationale for this. Moved by Director Henderson, seconded Director Stamford. Any discussion on the motion?
Just one.
Director Henderson.
If I might, Chair, we don't have a choice.
That's how I tried to start off the conversation, but it was important to to have this conversation, I think. All those in favor? Sorry, did you have your hand up? Okay, yeah, all those in favor? Fair enough. All those opposed? I trust you want that recorded again?
Sure.
Thank you. The motion carries. Item nine, we have the, okay, is there still a motion related to item eight or no? Okay. Looking, item nine, we have the manager of Protective Services here, and we have a motion already on this item. Director Henderson?
Yes, thank you.
That's to move the recommendation?
All all the items on page 64 of the online version, 62 of the printed version.
Okay, I see a second. Director Toth beat you to it. Any any discussion on this motion? All those in favor? The motion carries. Item 10, the manager of Protective Services is also here to answer any questions. This is an asset transfer to Sunshine Coast Search and Rescue Society. Again, hopefully straightforward. Moved by Director Backs, seconded by Director Toth. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor? The motion carries.
Thanks for dropping by, Matt.
Thank you for taking the time out of your day. Item 11 is 2023 insurance renewal. It's on page pages 66, 68. Director Backs?
I'm going to accept the proposal.
So that's.
Oh, did you?
Sorry. Sorry, it helps to put your, do it both if you can, because I only have one set of eyes.
I defer to Director McMahon.
Okay, Director McMahon, you have a question for staff?
I do. I mean, it's it's not going to be a surprise to anybody that our insurance rates are going up, but the jump in the ICBC premiums is really significant, and I was wondering what was driving that, if I can say that, sorry. Yeah, because in my experience with other ICBC insurance contracts, they have not gone up that much.
Thank you. I'll look to the manager.
Thank you for the question. We are just estimating the amount, so we they gave us sort of a, because we can't do it until December, right? So they've given us just an estimated amount to go up. There has been some changes in the last year, year and a half to do with their structure that does affect fleet a little bit differently. So I expect that it won't be as high, because it's just a percentage that they gave us this year. Thank you.
Director Backs?
I move that we accept the recommendations as on page 66 of the agenda.
Thank you. Is there a seconder, seconded by Director Toth? Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? The motion carries. And we have one more item on the public agenda here, which is minutes of a of a meeting that we've already received. So are there any are there any questions just for the GM? She's here. Seeing none, we're moving on to in camera. Okay.
I I just have a comment, which is that we will be looking for volunteers from this board for that committee going forward, so just bear it in mind.
Oh, from.
Joint use of schools, yeah.
From directors on the board.
Yeah, from the directors on the board.
Yeah, that'll be something that the the Chair of the Board looks after, correct? So now we're looking, Chair?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to invite my alternate to our in-camera session.
As well as the Seashell alternates?
Oh, and the Seashell alternates as well.
Okay, so we'll 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 just include that. We need a motion, and it's it's written. Now, is it a convention that I read this out?
Yeah.
The first bit?
The sections.
Yeah, okay. So we have a motion, with the exception of the three alternates in the room, that the public be excluded from attendance at the meeting in accordance with section 90, 1A and K of the community charter. And that's it. Moved by Director Toth, seconded by Director McMahon. All those in favor? The most, all those opposed? The motion carries. The motion carries. Okay. We are back to the public meeting. Does any, any members, do any members of the public have questions for the board? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. Moved by Director Henderson, seconded by Director Toth. All those in favor? The motion carries.